Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Appreciate everybody coming out. Seems kinda nice to have a big, full house full of people even though most of you are under the age of 25. So, this is kind of a neat thing to have. We don't get very many hairs on ice and it's always nice to have a place packed. So, appreciate you coming and hopefully you'll keep coming back and I'd like to see it this full every night. So, we'll kinda go from there. First thing on the agenda, we've asked Kyler Scholl, is that right? And he's gonna give us our prayer and then after, we'll have Cameron Scholl lead us in the pledge. So, if you wanna come up here to the microphone and give us the prayer and then afterwards, Cameron can come up and do the pledge for us.
Yeah, Father, we can pray for you. You know, we will go along, you know, please say it, we just want to know. Please, Father, please run. Can you repeat the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank our scouts for coming in and doing that and appreciate all the work that they always do and the scout leaders for bringing them in and taking their time to help them out. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion or do we have a motion on that?
Aaron, make the motion that we approve the consent agenda which approves the approval of the October 21st, 2015 City Council Ministers' Wilted Act and Orders, which is Title 10.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Being done, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next thing is public forum. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the mayor council or anybody on staff, come up to the microphone and say your name.
We're just here to, kind of, nothing really too hard about animal rights. We had a complaint from somebody about a pet of ours in the backyard. It's a pig, but tell the kids you can't have a pet unless you can eat it because the times get tough, I'm not gonna eat a dog. But anyways, you know, my daughter, she really wanted a pig and to me, yeah, it seems a little bit, but quieter than a dog, probably comes less than a dog depending on how you take care of it and, you know, I think, I have a horse farm in my backyard and at one point there was animals in my yard and then the neighborhood and through the water horses, you know, and I think maybe it's something that I gotta look into, I know we aren't gonna be here soon, but look into as far as allowing animal rights in existing areas where there've been animals for a long time and, I mean, you know, trying to explain to her, well, oh, they can have one because they can live longer than you, you know, through the block, et cetera. That and I guess my concern is, you know, while we have these complaints that, I mean, it'd be nice to know, I mean, you know, as people need stay anonymous because, you know, such a criminal act of having a pig, you know, that's how you're gonna fall apart and all that, but that if, we know it was legitimate at least, that it's not just somebody driving around or whatever. Anyway, my daughter just wanted to talk a little bit about her pig, yeah.
Hi, my name is Hannah Abbott. While I'm older, I'm gonna be a veterinarian. And my name, my pig's name was Popper.
You love your pig?
Yep.
Anyway, she had a little more to say, but, you know, the thing is, you know, we currently, we actually homeschool our children and, you know, the kids up there at the high school, they have those pens for the FFA where they can have pigs and, you know, obviously she's younger than them, but, you know, the first thing is she doesn't wanna be a veterinarian when she's older and so she likes observing animals, so you can tell me all kinds of things about animals and a lot of kids are used to it, but anyway, thanks for your time.
Hannah, do you still have animal rights in your...
Well, they asked us that and I said, well, I don't know, I mean, I'd like to consider I have the right to do whatever I want pretty much, but I don't think so.
I think that you have to have animals on there every year for so long, every...
They want there for quite a while and nobody, you know, find after all the other animals, but...
Yeah, and there are certain males that you have to do and I don't know.
I mean, I guess my main thing is I'd like to know if it was like legitimate complaint because if it's somebody just complaining about, you know, having to look at it, well, then I could set up a thing, go around it or something, but if it's somebody who might not know or somebody, you know, even though it's so far from anybody else's house, you know, like 200, probably 150 feet, 300 or 200 feet, but anyway, you know, you drive around the water, there's horses and there's all kinds of stuff, anyway, so look into it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to come up? Being done, we'll go ahead and close the public forum and we'll turn the time over to the staff for reports, any staff reports?
Mayor's and council, we'll check on the animal rights with Mr. Abbott.
Okay, thank you.
Police department this month had 134 arrests, 219 offenses, 215 citations, resulted in 295 violations, we had 1,377 calls responded to, two DUIs, 218 traffic stops and 29 accidents. Our calls went up about 300 calls in October this time, I don't know if you can, it's quite a busy month, so. Let's just announce that we have a prescription drop box installed up here in the lobby, you can see behind in the middle there in the green. Steve and his staff got it, so about two weeks ago and we're gonna have it unveiled in the morning at nine o'clock if anybody would like to come to that, so. And the prescription drop box is, it's sort of, you know, help out is just a place where you can discard unused or unwanted medication so they don't get in their own hands and sorry, it was a good thing for you to have it out there.
Brad, that'll be ongoing from there on out?
Yeah, it's a permanent thing, so you just drop it in there, it'll probably be there and look for it out in just a little bit. So, I think that's it.
Thank you. I'll update you on...
Council, I wanted to thank the police department as well as their fine retention notice, put graffiti on the 18th Amphitheater and they were able to help some and we're excited, yeah. Also, thank the parks crew for their work in putting the Christmas lights up there and the deep pizza, we've got those up and we're looking to get and let's throw some prepared on those if we can. And then also we've been blowing up the sprinklers at the parks with the air compressor and getting those with us.
You are a good speaker.
We're a team forever. Sorry to take care of the scouts, young men, it's only boys. We love you.
Yeah.
Just give you some updates with the ambulance department. Right now we're around to have scheduled, this might be police department, with our medical, we did 155 calls in October and right now it puts us at 400, or 1,456 calls. We're about 60 calls away from what we did last year, so we'll probably be about 200 calls above what we did last year, so missing 200 to 300 call increase for the last few years on the medical part. And then with the fire, we had 39 calls, which right now puts us at 409, which our high last year was about 412, so we're there as well, so. Calls are up, so we're staying busy. There's a lot of times when we have two freight ambulances out and there's been a few times we've had to have Salem or Santa Quentin help us on calls because we've got calls out, or we just don't get enough staffs to staff all three ambulances, so staying busy. The other thing, we're working and getting together with Salem and Santa Quentin on automatic aid agreements. Right now we have agreements in place with all the fire departments across the state of Utah, we're from Utah Lake, we can call them and get whatever resources we need and no cost us for help. What automatic aid does, being we're paged out, they're paged out, and so what we're looking at is automatic aid only on confirmed structure fires, so a structure fire for residential or commercial, and we kind of divide our city in half, so Santa Quentin will back us up on one half and Salem will back us up on the other. And if they're not able, we can cancel them or send them home, but you just never know what type of help they're gonna have, day or night, and they're in the same ballpark as well, so we're working on that just to help back each other up, like we do anyway, but this gets response there faster, so we're working on that process. As well, going through the insurance service office review, they reviewed the fire department, the water department and our dispatch center, and then they gave us a rating. Right now we're rating four, so hopefully we maintain that. We may have some changes in that area where we annexed into face and city outskirts, including Landville. The problem there is response from our stations, the agency limits and the water supply. Even though we already covered those with the county, they'll still get a rating, but it's not gonna be very good in our portion, but we'll know here if we go through and do that evaluation work then and see how the rate is. The others number, we're doing okay and we're ready to work on things on that, so it'll be, I think, a good thing there, so.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor. Just a quick update, the wellhouse will open next week, so we'll see who, you know, gets that, but the price will come in on the finish the wells and all of course, so we'll know that. And then, if you've noticed, I don't know if you've seen how, but we started fixing those valves, the water valves on the turf farm road that have been a problem for quite a while, so that that'll help smooth that real out, so. The weather stopped, just the wells make the finishing, but as soon as they can, we'll get back in and finish the lots for you and that should make it a lot better out there, so. And we'll start giving updates on how many people come to our camera, so we can compete with public safety.
Okay, any other staff? Okay, being done, Larry?
I'm sure Colin, you represented the chamber tonight in that presentation?
In that presentation.
For business of the month, right? So, I'll let you update him on the chamber, that's all I have.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate the winners of the election yesterday and thank people for voting. And just real quick, I won't take long there, but with this many students here, I just wanted to point something out that a lot of times we don't think of and we actually kind of take it for granted, but what happened yesterday was we had three of the council members replaced with three new council members, which happens every two years, but it's just kind of an interesting, maybe studying civics a little bit and history also, but a lot of places when there is a transfer of power, it's not peaceful. Does that make sense? Okay? A lot of bloodshed that goes along with that. There's a lot of places in the world that you wouldn't replace, even in a town this size, that you wouldn't replace your leadership without a lot of bad things going on, and that's one thing that our democracy does for us, so that when we vote, that's what we're doing, we're creating that peaceful transfer of power. And anyway, sorry, that went to my teaching days, but I just wanted to welcome them and thank everybody again for voting.
Okay, Kim?
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay, I'd just like to report that down at the veterans home the other night, the other day, and they built a new poppy field down there and they really appreciated the city for coming down and helping them once above yet. They have about, what, five dump trucks, six dump trucks of dirt, bring back in there and so, anyways, that's gonna be a nice thing, have that new poppy field back there. The residents, I guess, are really excited, they're gonna do a plaque and put facing city's name on it, Home Depot and that, so we can be pretty proud, we had a part to do with that, so. Other than that, we'll just carry on. Next thing on the agenda will be the scout attendance certificates and I'll turn that over to Joanne.
Okay, so when I read your name, come up, shake my hand, get your certificate and then shake everybody else's hand. Not everybody in the room. Okay, Wiley Wilson. And Luke Dally. And Thacker Simmons. Bradley Willis or...
Not here.
Not here. And Ty Gippert. Tason, can you take me? Kyle Scholl. And Matthew Lindbrough. And Topper, thank you. Are there any other scouts that we didn't? Is there some? Come back here.
Come up and then we'll, right by the name down.
Come on up, go say, shake our hand. Oh, gee, that's... Okay. Bradley Martin.
I have some trouble.
Alan. They did a big form, you said, they should show some, we didn't really have it.
That's why I said I must have missed that one.
I used to call them from that.
It's all, it's all...
It's a good thing.
Eric.
No, this stuff goes, this is pretty important, it's...
Is there anybody else?
get your certificates, so hang around. So, that might be till 10 o'clock, right, but the requirement is, is there a powwow going on or...
Yeah.
BYU powwow, okay. How many of the scouts that are here are awake? Order the arrow. Only us three up here? Oh, we got one down, right there, all right, well, all right. How many of you are just by the needle? Two, three, four, five, 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 four, five,[1390.81]
Justice has been an office TA in the front office of Payson Junior High for three terms. He is such an incredible young man. Justice is always on his best behavior and treats the other TAs, students, parents, and employees with the most respect. He is an awesome young man and willing to complete any tasks that are required of him. Justice is truly an example to his peers. He understands when a task, when a task needs to be completed immediately. Justice has been a TA during the final period of school and often is asked to find a PE class or other class that are not in their regular classroom at the time. Sometimes this requires him to search the grounds or even walk to the high school track. He understands the importance of finding a student to get them the message when apparent plans have changed that require us to notify the student with only moments before school is out. He will work on the task until it's completed, knowing how important it is. Justice has been with many different office TAs with varying personalities and is able to adapt and become friends with all those he associates with. I am so grateful to work with him in the front office and appreciate his forthback ethic and his kind and gentle personality. He is truly an example of what we desire in a student who assists those of you who work at PGA and chess. The next one is Lydia Londo. Lydia is a ninth grade student at Mount Ebro Junior High. She has been nominated to receive the Payson City Mayor's award for the month of November. Um, she, Mount Ebro Junior High School Student Council member stated that Lydia is a great friend. She is fun to be around and sets a great example for everyone. One teacher wrote that Lydia is one of the most amazing people I've ever met. She is friendly, hardworking, and positive. Another teacher wrote, "There are so many things to say about Lydia. She is smart, sweet, and a talented student. In the morning when she comes to school, I love seeing her look at huge cello that is big as she is into the school. She plays it beautifully. I've had her for yearbook for two years now, and she is creative and a hard worker. Lydia is the kind of kid that just makes people smile whenever I see her." According to a third teacher, "Lydia is one of the most hardworking, polite, always positive students I've ever met. She's a go-getter and does not let hard things get her down. She is in leaders, leadership positions where she can influence for good, for her peers and her community. I am very impressed by this young lady. We are very lucky to have her as a student at Mount Ebro Junior High." Lydia is a tremendous student who is always on the high honor roll. She takes her academics very seriously. Lydia is the president of the high honor society this year. She is very bold about just going through the agenda and presenting it to the group. Lydia plays cello in the school orchestra, is a member of the track team, and a member of the swim team, and is currently working on being a drummer in the Payson High School pipe band. Lydia is one of the greatest students walking the halls of Mount Ebro Junior High, and we believe that she is very deserving of this reward. Our next one is Hadley Brinhurst. Hadley is currently a senior at Payson High School. He has a 3.9 GPA and has taken many college courses and is currently on the National Honor Society. One of Hadley's teachers wrote, "Hadley Brinhurst is a dedicated, responsible, respectful student who does his work in a quiet manner. For example, the college writing students were asked to create a grammar handbook. Most of those students came up with this with multiple excuses and complained, but Hadley, but Hadley merely settled in doing his assignment without protest or acknowledgement. His quiet, non-assuming demeanor definitely sets him apart from his peers. Hadley is also kind and works well with others. In group projects, he supports his group and is an example to others in his group. He asks questions showing his involvement in a project, and he responds to questions by showing that he has been attentive and has thoughtfully pondered the material. He realizes the importance of learning has made the learning, and has made learning a goal. Hadley is a great student and many people look up to Hadley."
As you can tell, these, uh, these kids put in a lot of work, and it's, uh, it's neat opportunity to see exactly the good that we have here in town. And, uh, a lot of us don't recognize and see the amount of work that these kids put in. So what we'd like to do is have the council come up and, uh, we'll have them come over here in the center and we'll get a picture for the chronicle. Now, I'm gonna turn the time over to Kim. We've got a special treat tonight. We've got our new student council, and she's gonna introduce each one of them as you're introduced. The two mayor and the pro-camp will come up and sit by me. The others, you guys are the ones who gets called first and pick which, uh, which councilman you want to be shouted by. So, go build some mayor. Good luck is all I gotta say.
Okay, that's, um, three months ago, we put out posters of all the schools that she heights her, the high school and junior high, to recruit students to be on our new youth city council. So these students have applied, and we'll introduce them. First is McKenna Charles. She's from Payson High School. She is our new mayor. And she did one of her first jobs tonight, and that will be to introduce our youth mayor recognition awards to you tonight. And we'll also, we have, some of the students that you saw here tonight are not from Payson City, but they're from San Antonio because they all go to school here in town. So enter and we will go and present those to the city council also. Our next one is Tyler Menickin. He will be our pro-camp. He will work at running the mayor's job. He's an 11th grade, and then next year he'll become our mayor. The next one is Caitlin Lutler. She is our... So she's our public creations officer. And the next one is Rebecca Knapp. She's our planning commissioner. She'll also sit in with the planning and zoning and learn some of the things that they do, the planning commissioner. And then Ashley Graham is our service officer. And then right now, we don't have a recorder, so we're still looking for a recorder. Our treasurer is Elizabeth Bayon, and she could not be here tonight because she has a job. And then we also have three other members. We'll have elected members and then members that will just be part of our city council. So if you three wanted to stand up for a moment, this is Josh McNight. Aaron, is it like Schumer? Schumer, okay. And Stuckden higher. So these can be... Part of our idea is we're just starting out. We haven't had a youth city council for a while, so we are still recruiting. So if you know of other people who would like to join our youth city council, they're welcome to join us. We will hold elections again in April, and then from then on, we'll hold our elections each February. So if you are interested in running for daughters of the government and participating in some of our city activities, this is a great place to be, and we're excited to have you join us. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so for the council and the other council, uh, next council line, our council meeting, when we have staff reports, I want each one of you to stand up and give us just a short deal on what you've learned and what you hope to learn, okay? Then after that, uh, I want all of you to report to the mayor, and he will have to come in and give us all a report once, or once every, in staff report. So, uh, with the council, if you go to any of your meetings or that this week, they've all got a name, their name and their address and phone number or whatever. Uh, get that from them and give them a call and take them, have them meet you there or whatever, and, uh, let them just see what a little bit of city council work is. So if you're gonna go somewhere or do something during your meetings or that, give them a call and let them know. So we'll kinda go from there. I've asked them to sit up here for the night, and maybe probably another time or two, we'll have them sit up here and they can just observe and kinda shadow us. So, next thing on the agenda is the chamber business of the month. And I will turn that over to Colin.
Colin Loeb. I like these kids up there. They have to be on their best behavior, right?
Yeah, you know that ain't gonna happen.
I know, it's gonna be a change for all of us.
Yeah.
Alright, um, before I get into business of the month, uh, like Mike said, I'd like to update you guys on what the chamber's been doing. We just finished up our pumpkin hunt, and that's kind of our month-long event that we do during the month of October. And it's a really neat event. What happens is businesses sign up for a very low fee, and then, um, they kinda get on a card. They, they, on this card, they give, uh, uh, kind of messages, but they're kind of cryptic messages, where the kids then have to get the cards from the chamber office and then figure out what business has the message. So they go around to each business, then the business gives them maybe a piece of candy, but they sign off on the cards, and then once the cards are all done, then they hand them back into the chamber office, uh, and then they could win a prize. But the beautiful thing about it is that then the kids and the parents give to their businesses that maybe they've never been to before. You know, so it really creates a lot of business awareness. So it's a wonderful event that we do the entire month of October. We just finished it up, and then we just had our, um, our prize giveaway, which was on the 31st, and it was a, it was a really fun time to go on our website, our Facebook page, and we had all the pictures from that. And that was, that was really wonderful. We had a lot of people participate in that. Um, we're kinda getting into our slow time now. Uh, we're gonna have our, um, Christmas party coming up in December, and, uh, and then we're gonna have our retreat coming up in January. And I know, Mayor, this might break your heart, but my two years is up.
Your two years is?
Yeah.
Wow, bummer.
Remorse. Remorse.
I'm hurt.
But I am volunteering to do business of the month at city council every month. So, alright?
We'll be looking for you.
I'll bet. So like I said, our, our events are slowing down, but we are gonna gear up at our retreat and then start setting dates for our installation banquet. We're planning on doing our movies again next year. I don't know if you kids made it out, but, um, we do our free movies over at Petite Neat's, and I hope you guys will come out to that. It's a really fun time. Uh, we're gonna still do our business expo for next year and, uh, and all our other events. So, uh, very excited to start planning for that at our retreat for, um, for next year, and that'll be in January. Alright, moving on. I'm very proud and honored to, uh, to give this business of the month award away this month from the Payson Santaquin area Chamber of Commerce. Um, this business has, I'm very, very close and personal to this business. Uh, I've done a lot of, uh, of interactions, both on the business side and on the community service side with this company. Um, I don't think that there's another company out there that participates in our community and sets such a great example as this one that I'm about to present this award to. This is a business that this year has celebrated their 50th anniversary doing business in this town. Can I please get a big round of applause? Fifty years. Can you believe he doesn't look that old? It was as sad as it's ever been. I'll let him talk about that in just a minute. Um, but, but really, within the community, um, being a business owner is one thing and making a profit, but if any successful business owner knows anything about not only being successful, uh, and making money, but the more that you can participate and influence your community as a business owner, believe you me, that you're more successful, not only in your heart, but also in your pocketbook or your wallet as well. So with that being said, the November 2015 Payson Santaquin area Chamber of Commerce Business of the Month Award goes to Bayon Insurance.
I'm told I can say a couple of words. I will say that, uh, even though I may not look that old, um, I grew up in almost the same block as the mayor, and we were good friends, so he doesn't look that old either. But, uh...
He might like you for that.
It is a pleasure to be the business of the month. I consider, uh, South Utah County as one of the best places to do business. We've got real people, real businesses, and people that, that I love doing business with. I've always considered, uh, Payson, um, a part of me. I went to Payson High, and, uh, I'm a proud lion. And I, I thoroughly believe that if you support your, your community, your community will support you. And I am, I'm, I'm really, really glad that Santaquin is a part of our chamber at this time because I don't represent just, uh, or do business in just Payson. I do business in Santaquin too, and throughout all of Utah County. In fact, when I took over, um, we did business in one state. We now do business in the state of Utah, Arizona, Nevada, and Wyoming, and Utah. So, um, we've done that because our customers have moved out and didn't want to change agencies, but wanted to maintain that same representation, that same service. But, uh, thank you again. Everybody, we get a, we go group picture now. Jay, come on over here. Stand by your man. Yeah, we gotta, we gotta...
There he is. One more round of applause for fifty years and fifty...
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the discussion regarding a post-city for the tour of Utah. And I'll turn that to Jill.
Mayor, any city council members, if you have a couple representatives here tonight for the tour of Utah? Anyway, but, um, the tour of Utah is looking at bringing, um, the tour back to Utah County in 2016. And so they are, have submitted a proposal to Payson City to see if we'd be another post-city. We were a post-city at the June of 13th, uh, we were a finish stage. They are wanting to be announced to be a finish stage as part of 2016 tour. And so they have some information for you tonight about in the package to receive the original RFP that they submitted, that outline, which are responsibilities of post-city. Um, while we see that, when the city council sees the concerns that were raised, we have had some discussions with their staff to see if there are any that both responsibilities have been modified, recognizing the financial composition members. And so they have made some adjustments to that that they will address tonight. Uh, I did wanna turn some time over to Jen Anders and probably to Terry Larson also, to give some information to you, and specifically the decision from city council of whether or not we would consider a post-city then, um, for places.
Yeah, well, um, I brought a, a pre-council video that I thought that we could start out with. Um, Jen, you're the video director of the tour, and so thank you for your time this evening. And I mean, uh, I speak for your community about bringing the tour of Utah back in. I'd like to show this, uh, short pre-council video and the highlights from, uh, last year's event, and then we can, um, discuss where we're at for the next year moving forward, and how we'd like to incorporate this in the overall footprint of this one.
This is not the typical stage for the tour of Utah. I just can't wait how fast they're going.
They were here and then they were gone.
You go riding the bear against the gulliver. He is, go!
This kid's off this morning for the tour of Utah. Living's race. Alec Dracu literally ran away from the pack.
Thanks, Utah.
This is going to be chaos personified.
Gary Costad, full zone!
Stage three of the tour of Utah. Oh, we have a little trouble right there. There's a lot of car news out here right now.
Book wants to read the charge, and it's good. Oh, wow!
Stage four of the tour of Utah. I still can't believe those cyclists. They went up eight thousand feet, right?
Oh, man, I love how they do it. Great athletes there. You get close to the finish, these guys, they're like horses. They, they can smell the barn.
Eric Young, yowsa! That one had to hurt.
Stage five of the tour of Utah is officially underway.
Mike Ward, a massive win.
Put a little sticker on my handlebars that said, "Don't hesitate." This time I did it.
This is the day that the tour of Utah starts. This one is a beast. They are athletes, let me tell you. Look at DeBroski. He is just eating up this mountain.
Joe DeBroski, he is your winner for stage six, the green stage.
I figured I'd go early and, and just hit it hard.
Joe DeBroski took a 50-second lead into the final stage.
It's gonna be really man against man up there. It's gonna be a battle.
Holy Toledo, over 60 miles an hour, almost 65. Yah! Inside the final 300 meters.
And Norris raises his hand. Joey D, he is our champion for 2015 here in the tour of Utah.
Great week for us as a team. Um, you know, I'll definitely remember taking yellow, and then it was really a great team effort.
I get chills every time I watch that video because I have the opportunity to bring cycling to, uh, the doorsets of people all over the world, and I get the opportunity to showcase the great state of Utah. And, um, it's really just a postcard to our state and all the beauty of things, uh, that we have to offer here. Um, in 2013, we brought, uh, the tour of Utah to Payson. Uh, it was the first time that we had ever taken the tour off the Wasatch Front and brought it to any, anyplace else other than where we could immediately drive to in a hub and spoke model. Um, we didn't know what we were gonna expect, and Payson blew it out of the water. It was absolutely amazing, which is why we're here again, uh... It was absolutely amazing, which is why we're here again tonight to ask that you consider letting the Tour of Utah come back into your community and bring a world-class cycling event again to your doorstep. This year, we are looking at starting south once again and moving up towards the north in a fashion that we've done for several years. We do this because as with the Tour de France, we change our routes every year. Typically, we have one or two routes that remain the same, but every year it's a different course and a different opportunity for us to show new mountains and new sprints and new areas in Utah. And it really is, it's a fantastic backdrop to it. Last year alone, over 139 countries worldwide were watching the Tour of Utah via live streaming or on television. We offered 21 hours of live coverage on Fox Sports One, which is amazing because it takes Utah and it takes it into the homes of cyclists and other sports enthusiasts who would watch it, who would otherwise not be watching cycling, you know, in 100 million households throughout the country. For those of you who don't know what the Tour of Utah is, it's a pro cycling event. These are world-class athletes that get paid to ride their bikes. And we liken the Tour of Utah to the Olympics of cycling. We're owned by the Larry H. Miller Sports and Entertainment Group. And really, the whole mission behind the Tour of Utah is to promote active, healthy lifestyles and to bring Utah to the doorsteps of everyone in the country. We really believe in the state, and we're hoping that the council will consider allowing us and supporting the Tour of Utah as your co-adjunct staff in the Utah County. Questions that I can answer for you directly? As Jill mentioned, based on some feedback that we received from Dave and Jill and the rest of their staff, we've modified the RFP that you've received to make it look very similar to the support that Payson offered the Tour of Utah in 2013. And if you have any questions that are raised this evening, or you can focus on the topic. I'm here to answer any questions that you have and see if we can bring them to the community because this is an amazing community. I was looking at the wall here with the yellow jersey that you had, and I mentioned to Carl, "Look at how many people are there." And, you know, our spectator base is increasing with different ways of saying. And I think that once again, we'll see if this reappears in line with hearing fans and cyclists and enthusiasts who are coming on.
Does the council have any questions, comments?
I do. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be negative because this is a great event, and I enjoyed it. And I've enjoyed it for a couple of years now, just here in Payson. But as I remember us hosting it last time, I have to wonder what we got out of the money we contributed towards. I didn't see a lot of bang for the dollar that we put in. We put in a lot of effort, and Payson is a great community, and Payson will come out and support it. As you said, they do a very good job. But I personally don't know that I saw a $10,000 bang to Payson for that. Even in the video clip that you just showed, not one of the host cities was mentioned. I saw one person holding up the Park City Placard, but the whole cities were not even mentioned in your highlight video. So I'm wondering, where does the benefit come for the contribution that we make towards this event? It's a great event, but I'm not seeing the bang for the buck for us.
There's an inherent marketing benefit as we announce our host communities and we start to speak about them for the next 10 months. They are out in the national and international cycling newspapers. We do a lot of marketing surrounding the Tour of Utah and where we're going and how we are getting there. And you're right, this video did not highlight or mention directly by name the host communities that we were in, mostly because we're hoping to keep it short and really show as many of the postcard pictures as we possibly can. There are a lot of benefits that we provide to Payson via social media and some marketing and some live assets and things that we showcase across a number of different mediums. In addition, Payson is highlighted with a 30-second commercial spot that you have the opportunity to produce and provide to us. So that's put out during your stage on live national television via Fox One at no cost to you other than to host the event. In addition, we also do vignettes that are aired on both our recap show and during our live show that highlight Payson and what the community is and what activities that you can see there. So there is a significant amount of benefit during the race. And then post-event, we have a Travel Utah page on our website that highlights all the host communities and what you can do there and how you can go into the community after the race, race or ride the parts of the route and experience places to eat and places to stay in those host communities.
Was that available the last time?
You know, a lot of those things were available in the last one. The travel page is new this year, and we're seeing some great success with it. But yes, in 2013, you also received a commercial, and there was a significant amount of marketing benefit that was provided to Payson throughout the 10 to 12 months spanning the event. If you have other suggestions on how you would like us to help market Payson, you're certainly amenable to talk about those things and help provide additional resources and bank your buck if you want to follow that.
What is the event scheduled this year?
The events, the dates for the Tour of Utah this year are August 1st through the 7th. We are looking at a stage three arrival, which would be the 3rd of August. It would be a Wednesday.
Was that for Payson?
That would be, that would be the stage three would be for Payson, and it would be Wednesday on the Thursday.
I was, I spent the day there this year, or when we had it a couple of years ago. And first of all, I was really quite amazed at the preparation that you brought with you, the industry and the whole thing. I was really impressed with that. One thing that disappointed me, and I'd like you to think about afterwards, you know, as you prepare your plan for this, was that for all that went on that day, it seemed like the moment it was over, you were gone. It was just like turnaround and what happened. And I didn't feel like we got feedback afterwards. That was the impression that I had personally. It was just like, it was like, I don't mean it to sound like this. It was like the circus coming to town and then being gone the next day. Because it was well-run, it was obvious how much effort was put into it. But I felt like we didn't get my feedback after.
And when you say feedback, what kind of information were you looking for?
It just seems like, it seems like there should be more contact. It seems like, once it ran down Main Street and everything was pulled up and gone, that was it. And it seemed like there should have been more contact with the community afterwards. I just felt like it kind of fell short in that respect. Some kind of celebration? Ken, is that what you're thinking? Or some kind of a band under the event? Well, I just felt.
Come in and talk to us.
Something like that. I think the community would like to know what happened with it. But to me, being there and through the excitement that rushed through, and it was just pick up and gone. And it was, it was just like there was an empty spot afterwards, so.
There's an empty spot.
My question.
How do you appreciate that feedback for you?
Jill, I have a question for you. This is right before I need a salmon supper. Is that gonna impact your ability to roll the salmon supper?
I felt better about it when they said it was Wednesday instead of Thursday. Because when they first reached out to us, in my mind, I was thinking it was the day prior to salmon supper. So I was really nervous about that. And I know we've been sharing the information with Dave. We were a little nervous about, you know, could we pull off two completely different events, back-to-back? And we do it with salmon, or with, anyways, I mean, it's a three-day event, but they all belong to each other. And these would be two completely different events. And so when they expressed that it would be on Wednesday, we felt that gives us a lot of key info. So there's gonna be some additional personnel staff. We have another event that's allowed that week, and they're busy all week long who is preparing for the salmon supper. And so I think that we're gonna have to look at a lot more outside resources to help us because we just won't have a lot of the city staff to help to deal with this event because of what's happening on the day. But it does give us that day to clean. You know, as far as making sure the tour's cleaned up. And, you know, I share customer and head coach's concerns with, you know, and it was. It was cleaned up, they were gone.
They did a really good job.
They did a great job. They did, I mean, you can just tell, it's a system, you know? And they're picking up and they're moving to the next stage because the next morning, they're starting again for the next stage. And so to some extent, you know, they do need to just pick up and clean up and leave. And they left their food to be cleaned. And there was maybe damage that I was aware of. But, you know, it does give us that extra day.
Is the parks good with it? Have we talked to the Parks Department on it?
We have, we've talked about it with staff, and I, when I approached that.
Because you're putting two big events right there, back-to-back in the park there.
And I think in 2013, you know, we have staff members here that can comment on it as well. But I think we have support from all departments. You know, where a lot of the times when we have events in our community, there's a lot of demand that's put on the Parks Department. And I believe that our other departments really stepped up in 2013, recognizing that, yeah, this is a number of events that gets put on the Parks Department, and everyone came together. I mean, we had, you know, the department, we had our department, the administration, everyone that was helping this event. And I, so when I approached it to staff, because I wanted to get their consent too, because, I mean, they're definitely gonna have to participate. And that's how I approached it, is if we do this again, it's gonna take all those departments assisting because there can't be that amount on one whole department. And then this is an overview of what's.
I was gonna say, we talked to Mark. The big tent for the salmon supper would just have to be incorporated in the way we set up the tour. And he didn't feel like that would be a problem, but it has to go up before.
We didn't feel like the additional traffic down in the park was gonna be.
The chairs and stuff, that's always put up. Thursday night or Friday, Friday and Williamsburg. It's just that tent that was, that's gotta be up before.
How much earlier do we have to, like, take sand in and wood and?
The road will have the sand. I think, did he say it would have to be, it'd be done on Thursday?
It could be done on Thursday. I mean, they typically go earlier in the week, but that was discussed, but that could be.
They usually bring in all the fire stuff and.
And so that would have to be, either we have to work around it, or we'd have to arrange this. Now, as far as the modifications that were made to the plans, I know that that's something that you guys would have to consider as far as participating, is they have removed quite a few things from that recognizing that we only have one hotel in our community. And, you know, that's another reason that it just seemed like we lost. Because, I mean, if we did have hotels in this community, additional enough rooms to support the teams, they would stay here, they would stay in our community. But because we are limited on the number of rooms and recognizing that they're having to house, you know, 400 different riders, they would be going outside our community. That was one of the biggest concerns that staff had, and you had shared also with us, having to participate in lodging that is more than likely going to be accommodated in another community. And we wanted to see those benefits in this. So they have changed the RFP to, I'm just gonna go over real quick. So they have removed our obligation of the 430 guests in 2019. And they have also removed the team, our responsibility in the team dinner and breakfast, the staff per diem, the volunteer lunch, the medical office, and the team assignment. So there's been several things that they have modified since, or from the RFP that you have looked at. But we would still have our same responsibilities that we had in 2013, but we would have the additional responsibility of the night bus. And in Payson, we only have 62 beds. So there still would be some that were outside our community, but whether or not we could even book our entire, you know.
Do we have a sense of how soon we will make a decision on this?
Yes, they're getting closer and closer. They usually, I mean, last year, they announced, I believe it was in January. They announced that was the issue. I sort of looked and I found out what they meant. So this is where the.
So the next council meeting or tonight, or what are you talking about?
If you're not confident in making a decision tonight, but if you felt like additional information or looking over this information would, you know, help in your decision, then we could look at it two weeks from now. So I'm getting some information from the council, and I hope we could gather some of that and just see if, you know, the ones that were 2013, you know, see if we can get a deal for. They get it, I mean, coming back to Harry's conversation, he was really, really glad.
I think if we do that, we'd have to then have until the next council meeting to give our indication.
And I felt we didn't get numbers, so it was a deal, you know.
I did bring up Carolyn today. She was gonna bring up her party in the morning, and they were gonna talk to see what kind of help they might be able to help us, either marketing or getting some sponsorship to help be ready at all. So they were gonna talk about it, I obviously call it here. They're gonna do a few minutes up, that's about this time, but I can say that I can tell. But they aren't gonna talk about it before meeting, see if there's anything to change. Do we have any other comment? No, I think it's, to do with information. When you talk about what could change, what's the cost? Are there gonna actually be $16,000 for Payson, that's?
I would estimate that it really depends on some of the things that Payson City would like to do. In many cases, they choose, the city on its own will choose to do some additional marketing surrounding events. We provide posters and a lot of printed materials, artwork for you to do, street poll banners or other things. In addition to that, we provide a robust package of options and assets to logos and things that you can package as a particular sponsor packages. And you can go out to your local businesses and ask for their support in terms of local partnership. You have the opportunity this year to sell local booth space at a rate that would help offset some of that cost. The tour is committed to not sell one day booth space at any of our national partners. It is as a package. So anybody who's interested in having a booth in the lifestyle and go for one or two days would be directed directly to the host community in which they would like to participate. That money goes back directly to you. Any concessions that you want to sell to the public, that's something that also goes back into the community. We don't sell any concessions to any of the set tiers. We do set up a merchandise booth, and our national partners will have exhibit and things like that. But there are lots of opportunities for Payson to generate additional revenue to help offset that cost. We revamped the partnership program from 2013. So it definitely will loosen the strings for the city staff to go out and work with the chamber so that we have some additional support. The overall cost, it can be anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000. It really depends on how we work together in terms of some of the city services that we require, the toilets and the trash and the internet service and things like that. There are, you know, those are things that we can work through in terms of the concern with the salmon supper. I don't think that there's any piece of the infrastructure. I don't think that there's any piece of the infrastructure that we couldn't work with or work together with, you know, in the Parks Department to make sure that those things were in place. And then we could either utilize them or help assist to make sure that those were set up in a timely fashion. My crew is very buttoned up and they work very hard to make sure that they work together with the Parks Service and several of the other departments so that they can continue to do their job and that the impact in terms of that day and build out is minimal for the community.
So hopefully, we can reduce a lot of the cost due to different things that you mentioned here. But that aside, we're committing $16,000 plus 90 minutes.
No, that would include the 90 minutes. In my mind, I mean, but that's for you all to decide.
Last year, the Capitol called, we gave $10,000. We did give sponsorship, about $5,500. We spent most of that. We didn't have to get five, many rooms two years ago. They lowered it down, but it's still more than what we did last year. But if we need to market, we should come up with it. As far as the city funds for the marketing, they, you guys allocated $10,000 in 2013. We raised the rest, covered. We were hoping to raise enough not to have to use that. But we ended up using that and the $500 that we raised. So I think, I think for between $10,000 and $15,000, we could get stuff done. The hotel is what we have to talk about. We have to probably look at, just see if a sponsored hotel, maybe the one in Springville. I don't know where the athletes are going to be going and if they're going closer to Lehigh. The next, the next stage is open that area, that would be somewhere.
Well, we're not sure. But last time, because our hotel wasn't as high a quality for the athletes, that they ended up with the Meredith.
The athletes will move on to wherever we're starting the next.
Maybe that, maybe that was it.
The 90 rooms that we're asking are for staff and media and some others. 90 is on the high side. In actuality, when we look at the number of local staff that we have, once we're within a 90-minute radius of where they live, they stay at home. So for us, it really depends on what our staff makeup is. So right now, it's myself and my colleague Carrie Larson can work on the tour full-time. And we live in Utah. But I have 700 people who come in. We hire the local workers from Utah. They come in, they're specialty construction crew members or vendors that are bringing stages and whatnot in from all over the country. And we are required to house them. So it really depends on what our crew makeup is. If that number could be as low as 70 and 30, that would be a surprise.
Address the council?
Yeah. I was on the committee two years ago when they did this. And Tour Utah was so great to work with. And the volunteers in Payson just came out and drove to help this. I just encourage you to really consider this because I know we raised some money to offset some of the city costs. But also, we've been through it one time. We know how it works. And so we have a lot, our jump on was a learning curve last time. And so Jill did a lot and Tour Utah did great work with. So I always, you would think that we could even raise the money to offset that. But I think it was a great marketing tool for Payson. Our name was out there quite a bit. And I just, I think it's just a great opportunity.
Okay, any other comments from the council? Anything? Motion? Carrie?
I'd like, I'd like just to vote on this on my next meeting. So we can, we can digest the meeting.
And can we get maybe that information from Carolyn?
Yeah, they have the meeting. I'll talk to her.
Maybe in our packet, maybe.
And I'll be at that meeting tomorrow morning. So I'll be part of that discussion and let you know when I find out.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to address topics as you choose.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Foe?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go to that point. The next thing, and then we have people here for the recognition of Wesley Berger's support of the Payson City K-9 programs. And we turn that over to Brad.
Mayor, thanks for bumping us a little bit. These guys have another meeting or another city council to attend. Wesley Berger is, can Wesley come up here? Wesley, Wesley Berger is a young man from here in Payson who has made his mission. I guess his whole family's made their mission to go out throughout the state and neighboring states, thanking law enforcement for their service. And I think Wesley said he's visited over 300 different officers so far and thanked them for their service. Wesley also completed a big fundraiser on October 10th at Stokes and Salem, which was geared at supporting K-9 units within Utah County. He and his family and with the help of volunteers and others in the county, raised about $2,700. And with that, Wesley went throughout the county and donated several hundred dollars to each apartment, which has benefited our K-9 program greatly to the tune of $300, which is a pretty big number for a little guy like Wesley. So we would like to thank him and present him with a plaque for our appreciation and for the appreciation of his support and the donation to our city, which helps us all as our community. And we would like to also thank his parents because they, they spend lots of gas money, I would assume, traveling Wesley and Harley, his sister here, around the, around the state and neighboring states to show their appreciation for the men, women, and the police and fire and public safety in general. So we would like to thank him, give him a round of applause for what he does for us.
Mayor, if you'd like, come up here with a picture and present this.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the discussion regarding water meters. And I'll turn that over to Brad.
I'm just going to start out. I had to continue. I was going to say, it's kind of office, not for now. But we haven't had any students in here since 1984. Okay, as you know, we did a grant. We made that application, I assume that is general. They made the decision, they made. And I received the notice for speed this Monday. So we actually have the official notice for speed on our grant. In speaking with Dave and the staff, we have some questions we'd like for you guys to. In direction. The grant, we received is $300,000 to match your grant. So that's $600,000 that we're committed to for this. We'd like to install and get irrigation leaders on the P I system. One of our questions is, would we like to, basically, let us add a new, at Park the Grant, every year, do the second four step, four-year process? Would we like to contact ZIAP, bond the entire amount, jump right in and get this done? And so we had a couple of questions regarding that. I have prepared, we have, the RFP to go out and select the meters, to select the actual meter. Put that up there. And multiple companies did provide that. And we have spoken with all of them and they are all interested to get this to their best price. We approximately have 4,473 meters which we need to install. So it's quite a lot. But, like, we just had a couple of questions to the RFP. How would we like that to proceed? You can, we'll put it, RFP, select the meters, select AMI system. We automatically lead the meters. We will collect the data from what we can, from the $600,000. And then reapply for the grant unofficially, off the record. They want to see the project completed, so I believe we'll receive another grant. We will, we have to apply every year. But I believe once we start, we have the chances of doing it again. So it's not like we want to do it. They actually, they want to see the project.
So would it be about probably the same size of grant every year?
Yes.
And so each time it'd be a 50% match? Would it be?
There's, there's two grants.
Every year that we're.
There's a $300,000 and there's a $1,000 grant.
Is it water meter specific?
As far as the grant? No, it's, it's called a water, small grant. And there's different projects you can do for the grant. We have chosen, water conservation is one of the topics that's available. And with the meters, that will conserve water. And the residents are physically responsible for the water they use. It will reduce the quantity that's put on water.
So ballpark, we have a rough idea of how much meters are?
Yes.
And how many meters there are?
Yes.
So how many years would we need to get this matching grant to complete the project?
10? No, that's what's 2.6.
I'll be around 2.6.
It's really.
Yeah, I mean, it's. $600,000 a year, probably take four years.
For the rise.
Or four to five.
Originally, in the grant that we submitted for, it was a three, it was a three cycle. We put in this, this budget year, next budget year, and the next.
Three cycles.
Three cycles. That's how we put it in. And so it just depends on how aggressive we would like to be with it. With the water you had last year, I would have loved to have the years.
One of the, one of the things we'd like to accomplish by doing this is to make sure we get the AMI system so that it can be automatically read. You have to put some towers up and make sure that you can read your whole city with these meters. And so that could be the first step, to get that backbone in place and whatever meters we could get and then.
We have gone through another property this day, where the tower is a beam. And it looks like we have two, one and the Patterson Daines, our table that's raised upon the hill. And then one of the power plant. It should be able to read the entire city with a lot of events. That probably is, is probably what it's doing. So.
So when you say the ability to read, does that mean we have to go by the meter with a sending unit? Or they can use it from there?
No, we could read it from the office. We could read it real time live. If a resident came in, we could pull it up and say, we could see real time.
Say, this is what he was using at this moment.
On this date at 3:00 PM, this started going like this, and it dropped out to 3:05. That's the kind of the, the Jackson thing, but he's going to that office later. Spanish will have that.
So, but are you saying then that there's some, that in order to get that system in place, there's some things we need to do first, obviously?
It is a very. We could, we could put, come in and then read. Well, we have the tower, we would read them.
Can we read the actual water meters for culinary? Actually, that seems.
Yes.
That's dependent power.
But you'd have, you'd have to rent, we'll take some of that. Every meter or whatever you'd have to.
If we've been in the building section, we could, we could hook up the culinary meter with that.
What do we read that, what do we read our AMI off of right now?
We have a drive-by system.
With the culinary?
Yeah.
For the culinary?
And so. So they go drive by your lawn. And there's people out there building and.
It just seems like, you know, we talked about this before. And maybe Scott, maybe you brought it up. There's some things that we need to do before we, in order, in order for the meters to be all successful. That there's some things that we need to do before.
There's one area, this is the location. This is for the P I.
Oh, you were talking about culinary hall.
Yeah. But there's, there's a great majority of the clients who. There'd be some extra day, you know.
So game prep. I'm looking at a stage you only need to do first. Would we be putting in those towers before the meters? Or would we be putting the meters?
Together. Together. We would select a meter and not, would that company, they would integrate this to manage everything?
So are we going to upgrade the system? Are we going to upgrade the system after the meter you're putting in? The culinary or?
Or the.
Oh, the, the lack pressure now. When are we going to, when are we going to fix that after the meter?
Well, and I guess that's kind of what I was beginning to maybe, maybe that's what I think. That's why I was saying, we mentioned some things before that we, and I don't know if some of this grant could be used for that kind of thing. I mean, we were saying that we're eventually going to pitch that, but we need to do business in this facility. We've been, we're there. I mean, we don't want to put in a system and have it be ineffective because we haven't done.
The meter system is, it has a, it has a, the vision system is Asian. But the meter reads, that would be made, it would be all the meters in the media. Yeah.
I, I think from my perspective, this discussion ties a little bit to the discussion we're going to have later on water conservation. Some things are going in there too. Not building it together, but there's fee schedules and things in there that tie into this conversation.
Yeah, the water conservation plan is coming up there. That's, this day granting it, uh, through all the, it's, it's. But I said, this thing, you said, we, we would just like to know, we would like to piece a little bit of that lack of work and just go through the grant and match. Hold on, there's like a, a whole thing.
We've already got the grant for this one, this part right now, right?
Yeah, we have. Yeah, I just have a.
So I guess what you're asking is, do you want us to approve, to let you take what we have on this one and start on the backbone?
Yes.
And then?
And also, I would like, once we select a meter and then complete, I would come back and do a little bit of work. Think a new resident will install that meter as part of that.
Are we budging this? We imagine that for the matching.
No, we're going to have to budget a payment for that.
But it's in the water from bounds.
I think with our debt situation, it'd probably be better to go with the grant and do the match and then do another grant instead of going into debt.
That's what I think.
Yes, that was my question that was going to be asked.
I mean, that's kind of the big question to ask because we, we've got the grant. We've got, I think, money in the water fund out so that we can do our matching part. So we can get $600,000 for the project done.
And we could do that simultaneously.
And then we have to apply again. And it's not a. And then we have to apply again, and it's not an absolute guarantee, but then probably, once you start down the path of this project, there's, there's more to climb here, the, the next year, the next year.
Yeah, I guess I'd rather do that, the, what you said, the, the piece bill with grants.
I, I know it doesn't address what Scott's saying, as far as you've got some issues on the, on the pressure and ponds, and whether we use high line canal as another pond, or whether we have to go out and build another pond in another situation, so. Those are issues we can, we're going to have to deal with.
Right.
As we go.
So will this three hundred thousand, or are you going to have to come from somewhere else in the budget, or do we already have it kind of built into our water?
It, it would come out of the water budget, but yeah, we, we either.
You'd have to increase fees.
We'd have to increase that, or, or use funds out, and help gone, but. Everyone's like that, so.
That was, I mean, we're up to the big step now, so that's kind of what I wanted to. If you recall, we, we were worth this grant before.
And then you turned it back. I don't.
Personally, I, I think we turned back the game, we won't.
Oh, but, but even. I mean, we can, we can, can't we, take it and say, okay, we're going to start if we want, and we're going to start, but it's not going to be right this very second, it's going to be a little bit. Yeah.
You know, so there's, they were on the, we have hours.
Yeah, let's, let's return on, and we are.
Right, yeah.
When we turned on the last one, we were trying to get the bigger one, hadn't we? And we talked to them, and they saw it's not going to make a difference, but I think it did kind of hurt us a little bit.
But I see.
We ended up talking, getting the bigger one, and we turned down the other one, so. We feel like the best chance of getting money is the smaller three hundred thousand grant, every year.
Well, if we put in for the one million dollar one, could we actually come up with a million?
Yes. Give more of a.
The matching grant.
Okay?
Yeah, Sarah, you have a good point, if we get three hundred plus the match, and then actually get three hundred plus the match, if there comes a time where we don't get the match, we can always bond, but we bond for less, because we know we get so much done.
Yeah, that's why I was saying.
Bonding for a million is a lot cheaper than bonding for three million.
Yeah, we could do it later, we just.
And we can change any time we think, if there's a good opportunity, or if we come up with some funds.
Yeah.
Go, we can always put more funds to it if we feel that.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what concerns me, is Mount Hill, or in Spring Lake, I just feel like we're eating ourselves a little bit here. I mean, we're hoping, you know what we're doing to the lines, by the way it's set up, instead of having a pond for it being entered, by forcing the straight end of the lines for it.
Well, and I guess that's what I'm, but coming back to my question, are some of those issues, can we take, can we use this grant, like, to fix some of those issues?
Not for yet, I think it's, it's for water conservation.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, because I didn't know, because, because it's all in the same project, if anything, would see it that way.
What would be the cost of trying to fix those issues that Scott's referring to? Well, quantify it for me, give, give me an estimate. I mean, we can keep talking about this forever, we don't start to think about it.
Well, kind of depends on the high line too, if we can like, for some of the pressure issues, if we go through and put in some, uh, new ponds on the high line, on the canal, and have them, uh, clear them out, I mean, we'd have to go back here probably, if they put, they're, they can hang their board and. Let's see, one of those.
Go there and spring that.
New line town.
That's a pump line, it's not a gravity line, so. So that's kind of.
Or what, do you think it'd be more expensive?
Extremely harder. Yes, and we're sent to mercy. Because it's your.
Out of the spring, like you said when you were talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd almost have to pump the canal.
You'd go to higher again. Create a, because you're. Off of above, gravity down.
That would, or exchange water, so yeah.
So that's an option.
But the purpose of the meter grant was to conserve water. I can actually make, make the citizens physically responsible if they put on.
But you know where I'm coming from, we started putting meters in at the salt pillar, and we're just chasing around unplugged meters back. You know what I'm saying?
But there's no moving parts in the meters.
Well, I understand that.
There are you want in the meters.
The stick, the stick that we get through there, it's going to plug them up.
There's no, it's a straight channel shot, there's no moving parts, and there's no. It's not like the old.
They don't want to be powered down.
No.
No, the meters weren't plugged in anymore than the pipes were.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you plug the pipe too.
It would go through the meter, it would filter.
It would be up before the pillar, after the pillar.
Well, and, but, but even if we decided, even if we took the, the water conservation grant, because it is a conservation grant, if we decided that somewhere, you know, that we the meters weren't the best idea, we could probably have a conservation project, right?
But can we not put it on? On new, new buildings? New stuff for now, and?
Well, the meters, that's what the grant was responding to it. When we start this process, the, our standards are going to change, so I can do, every new home that's built, you have to put this meter in, and do this with the other meter.
Currently, we're putting, we're putting Roxy in a jumper for the meter, so.
But we've never picked out a meter, then?
No. They've actually come over here, but.
I was going to say, that'd be a good thing.
Yeah, and that, right, and they've actually come, gives you bounds, so, I mean, the whole lot is getting better right now, so, the, the time is now to choose one.
I think if we're going to insert the grant, you know, before, we've got to do it a separate timeline, I don't think we need to go in for it. That's kind of the direction we needed for the high.
Yeah, so that's what you.
Direction or direction.
What direction, did direction?
Yeah.
Well, I, I can spend the three million dollars.
All right, you've been directed to?
Six hundred thousand.
A portion of that.
A portion.
And then once, we will submit the R P out, and we go out and select the meters, we will.
But I would like to see that meter selected now, and put on all, all the, all the. Meter on out.
Would you like me to swipe the meter for you there?
Would you? I mean, that's probably two months.
I'd probably have to not vote that.
Look, I, you know what I mean, let's get it started on the newer projects now, so that we're not that much further again behind.
Well, once we, once we take the meter, we will call, and we will start to collect the data, and so we will have, we can reply to the numbers, and then we can, we can basically, you know, out of there.
All right, you've got direction. All right, next thing on the agenda, we have a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion, we have a second. Got a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now into public hearing, and this will be on the request for the approval to vacate the existing public utility easements located on Forty-Five West, Thirteen Twenty South, and Thirty-Two S, Thirteen Twenty South. Turn that over to Dave.
So Mayor and Council, here's a copy of Amendment Plaid B, and this issue is in conjunction with what's on your agenda's D four, or E four, sorry. A resolution approving Amendment Plaid B. Under state law, this is required, I don't know if I have a pointer, do I? So, what the proposal was, and you guys are familiar with this issue, this is the Dry Creek Channel, and the property owners have requested that we sell some of the property to them, that we haven't been maintaining very well. And, and so, we had Epic Engineering come and draw up the proposal. But as far as the public hearing goes, where the current lot is, there's a public utility easement here, on the edge of each of their lots. By selling them some other properties and amending the plaque, we're proposing to vacate this public utility easement, because now their lot is going to be bigger. We have public utility easement around the outside of, of the entire amended lot. So, state law requires that we have a public hearing in case there are some utility companies that have put infrastructure in that public utility easement, I don't believe there has, I've had calls from Questar, Utopia. It seems like one other company that just wanted to clarify what it was, they didn't have any concerns, that's the reason for the public hearing, if they want to kind of express concern that, that there, there are facilities in there, but that's the reason for the public hearing, we're requesting that that be vacated. And then, as part of your next item, if we approve this amended plaque, the public utilities being around the outside of the entire parcel. So that, that's for the public hearings.
Okay, we are in our public hearing, is there anybody that would like to come up and address the council? Saying none, we'll ask for a motion to close the public, public hearing? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're now out of, uh, public hearing, does the council have any discussion? Or a motion?
By doing this, we still have all the access we need for Dry Creek.
Yes, and we can talk about that when we go to the next issue, what, what I would recommend the council do is just make a motion, approving the vacation of the public utility easements for this portion, and then we'll go to the, the next portion that talks about selling the property, uh, to the property owners, and talking about the access we have.
And I'll make the motion that we vacate the public utilities.
No, second.
Here, we got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is the, well.
Too much with that as a number four?
Let's just put down the number four, and we'll take care of that while we're here.
So this is the Plaid B, Council of State subdivision, this is a request, that the Theobalds who have this, this property right here, and the Roadback, I think they're both here.
Yes.
So. We, we felt like as a city, we needed access back to Dry Creek, we have had a lot in Dry Creek for these last few drought years, but we still felt like we needed access into there, we looked at a roadway over in the next block, and maybe not having this access at all, because we could access over here, but as we looked at that, we don't own. There, there's a street that goes partly back, but then there's a parking area before you get to Dry Creek, and then there's more property before you hit Dry Creek, that's owned by Patterson Construction. So it's really not a public easement into there, we didn't own it, so we felt like we needed to keep this. We did narrow it to twenty feet, we had it at twenty-five feet, but there is an access that we can get in here when we need to, and access the Dry Creek on this side of the channel. It, it did enlarge, I had that, I'm going to do that. Both of these properties are getting all to the road or a, or add-on, and it's a property that's in wood and trees and weeds and almost enough, in fact, the, the property owners have cut down about a few trees. It looks pretty good out there on the other, they would like to fence the area. We're going to have one of our track crews go out and pull out some of the stumps for them. In the next week or so, we're going to be able to get to it, so, but the proposal is, if, if the council approves the resolution of amending the plaque, from that, we become one plaque, and when we record this, this will become a lot. And then the property will go active here, it's been surveyed, and if it's approved, Epic Engineering will prepare a webinar, we'll have it signed and recorded, and what I sent out is an email, is, uh, we, we, we took a rate of twenty thousand acres, and then divided by how much acres there is, and I think, and then lost a portion of the survey cost we had since. I don't have it here with you, but it seemed like the Theobalds was somewhere around. And this is amended just a little bit, the Roadback is an extra point one seven acres, it's thirty-four hundred dollars, but the Theobalds is four thousand dollars. There's going to be five hundred original for the cost of the survey, so, so it's, that's approximately how we, we amended some of this, we pulled over the act of this point, but so that those numbers might change slightly, but not very much, so that's kind of, we explained that to all the Roadbacks and Theobalds, that people are okay with. But it's, it's higher than just a raw land, but it's less than a, a divided lot, so. I think they were okay with it, if anyone has any questions, but.
Is there any comments, or anything you want to?
I don't know, we just, we just kind of have to clean up the hall.
So, ease with the believing there, is that sort of going to be unprepared and garbage trap?
Well, we hope, we, we hope we do a little better job doing it, they, they talk about they're putting a gate on there, we're not opposed to having a gate on there, so that people can't go back in there, but people can get in there from the other side of the places, we can't say nobody's going to be back in there.
Would we, would it be okay if, you know, really don't own the land, they use the land, and we have access to it, or we can keep the access there?
Sure, yeah. I think we talked about in some of the areas of town where we had someone to sell property, we have, we have a property that we paid to make it in it. Some of the expenses are not only that, we'd be happy to repay and take it back, or whatever. So there's other options, but just give them a little more property, they can fence, have a little more security, hopefully keep some of the. Yeah, what, what it is, there's approximately twenty-five feet, some's a little more, some's about that, we wanted twenty-five feet to the length of the town, so we can actually put it in. If you ever get the flood, which we never had for a while, then you need to get it, go in there, so we want to make sure we have the access, so.
Okay, do we have a motion? Or anyone in the discussion?
We, the firm, I don't think would be that we would, I would make a motion that we direct the mayor to sign a resolution number eleven four one?
One five.
Yeah, eleven four one five, or do we have to do that? Finding that allowing access easement to that area, um, necessities, for the, for the, for the, especially for giving the opportunity to clean out that area.
Okay, you got a motion? We got a second, is there any other discussion? Okay, uh, this is a road call, so, Larry?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, we'll get my order prepared, and we'll, we'll go back, so we can get directions.
Okay, next thing on the agenda will be the basic city water conservation plan, and we're in.
Is that the twenty-five percent, you're talking about the loss, that? I had a question, is that twenty-five percent of our total usage, reduce twenty-five percent of the loss, or is that twenty-five percent of the loss?
The rest of the, was, was it in the tank, and the rest? The, uh, to the rest.
So we use, you know, just say a question, we use.
Yes.
You lose twenty-five percent.
So it could be, it's a big quality of the.
I, yes, I believe that, it's got a, kind of, standard. Before, it wasn't that. We, I have a trick, leased fifty weeks in there lately. Another P I early night. We, I have a six, leased fifty weeks in there lately, another PI over there, one I ten, one five, and so, culinary, we have a lot, so very old, very old, the reconstruction on Seven Eight West, when, when they were reading the sewer line first, every time they crossed the water line, there was a struggle, they kind of blew up, they picked that every day, and they would put sewer line, next neighbor would go farther, fix the water line, so it's, our infrastructure is coming over all the time, so that's, that's part of the plan, but as far as the water conservation plan, I'd say, we should stay in that, this is our third one since they started. And I'm just looking for a motion to allow Dave to sign.
So, so we're approving, they asked me to approve this water conservation plan, but I read every word of mine.
The doctor, it's in the doctor.
I haven't... I'm gonna start calling you Kim.
Okay.
I'm gonna take the back in just a second.
But I have, I have a little bit of an issue with one point of part of this.
Which part?
It's on page ten, and I printed it out, and it's the P schedule that we got there. When we first started talking about metering and everything...
This is culinary, this is only culinary.
Oh, this, this is PI, this is culinary?
Always to your home.
Okay, then I forget what I used.
Yeah, this, and that schedule is for bleeding, if someone bleeding wants to waste water, we would be impressed, and this, that's not, it's not our rights, it's kind of a, it's a...
Well, if we're, if we're having a water conservation plan, we have to, that's not a suit, but...
Yes.
The I water, yes.
Well, there you go, the, the same mandate is culinary.
Okay.
If they don't mandate, would you want to pour?
It's not, they're...
Kind of because they have that.
And so, it's, it's the stove role, that was, this is, if someone really believes wants to waste culinary water, we...
Larry, is every other word okay?
Yes, I'm, I'm okay with it now, but this is, this is culinary, you have to charge you a lot of administration for it.
We treated, we coordinated, we don't want it to go down.
So, that, that's what's...
So, PI, you can just waste it?
No.
I have an issue with PI.
Oh, okay.
Whatever, we, we, we don't have, we need more, but this is, and culinary rights, I mean, we have, our culinary rights and our plans and our laws are going to, it, culinary PI, it's not...
Do they not, do they not mandate water conservation regulation then?
Not through this, not, I, I think not.
I think they do, but it's more through Highline, isn't it?
Yes, irrigation, because not, not everyone has one, all cities don't have those things. If, if there are water outside with our culinary, the better, you know, too tight we're on.
Kim wants to turn.
I probably did not read quite as much as Larry did.
That's probably right.
Well, I'm still asleep, this will happen to be like him.
But I am really serious about this, I've read enough of it that I could tell it needs to be run through some kind of spell check.
I, finish talking this one.
Well, I think just as a basic statement, I would prefer not to have our name on a thing that has as many misspellings as this has in it. And, uh, excuse me, I'm gonna, they're not misspellings, they're typos, they're just simple typos, but they're, I would rather just, as, put the whole document through a spell checker, clean those things out. Well, you know, I, I'm not trying to be...
No, I...
Snotty, I just wanna say, look, if you will look, um...
Look at you now.
Yes, do me a...
I missed that part, but I just don't face the problem.
If you go... No, no, I'm, I'm just, I, just as an example, that's all, if you go to, uh, code four, I think it is, or is it code five?
What page?
Code five.
What page is that?
It's page, uh, title four, I don't see what the words. The, the red on twelve oh one, two three oh. Twelve point oh one, point two three oh.
What page are you even looking at?
I'm looking down here, it says title twelve dash five, so it's the bottom corner, it says page five. It's the sewer. Okay, so...
I should go over there.
Change, change my thinking when we come to the sewer.
We're good on this one then, all right?
If, if the council would like to review it and put on the consent agenda for, with us, rest in peace.
Okay, so...
I'm, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, go ahead.
Once you, once you've done the math and checked on this and the spell check, I would make a motion to approve the water conservation plan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Say none, all those in favor, and do we need a road call on this? No, we don't, we just need a motion. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, okay, motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is the P E H P, long-term disability, I'll turn that over today.
Mayor Council, this, uh, our insurance company, P E H P, provides our health, health insurance coverage, um, they are changing the way they do business with our long-term disability. It's called a long-term disability premium waiver benefit, so whenever anybody, uh, became disabled, uh, that were employees, um, they could continue on our insurance, uh, while they were on disability, P E H P would waive the premium, the employer part, the employer would pay their portion, and they just handled that, they didn't charge the city for it, and, uh, that's the way it's been, I think ever since I've been here. But, uh, with the Affordable Care Act, that, uh, nobody can be denied for insurance, and the costs of insurance, they indicated they're no longer going to cover the premium waiver, and so they gave the city a few options. I think I scanned this and put it in, if you can, we can end the benefit effective January first, and then everybody, even those on disability, would, uh, no longer have coverage starting January first. We could end the benefit, uh, moving forward, that grandfather those that are currently on the disability waiver program, we would need to cover the, the premiums for those currently on until they go off. Uh, we can implement the stipend model, wherein, uh, those that are currently on, those that become on disability, they would, uh, P E H P would pay them the employer portion of the premium as a stipend, and they can go out on the market with the Affordable Care Act, and they can locate their own premium. We would still have to pay that coverage that they pay them, or number four, we can continue with what we're currently doing, we would just be, we would get the bill and instead of P E H P waiving that, and, uh, just keep it the same.
Your information said that we're waiting for that, we have a one.
Right, right now on disability, we've had a few people on disability over the year, but right now it's just Dale Knight, and, uh, he has cancer, uh, they just found the spread a little bit more, so they're still going through some chemo and stuff, but personally, I felt like, number two, we could end the benefit going forward, because nobody's applied, so, moving forward, if it gets on disability, just know ahead of time that they're gonna have to out and locate their own coverage, but I didn't want to leave the night time dry, so I felt like we ought to pay that premium as long as they're on the disability. They're encouraging him to apply for social security disability, and if they apply for that, uh, they may cover a lot of those costs, and we may not have to pay that, but that's my recommendation for the city council, that you have the option of any, any one of these four, um, but my recommendation would be number two, to end the benefit going forward with anybody else that gets on disability, but grandfathering the current recipient, we would just have to pick up that cost.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have a motion?
The motion that we approved long-term disability premium waiver is that at the number two plan.
To go forward basis.
As long as Dale's taking care of it.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, motion and a second, do we have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, okay, motion carries.
Mayor, that was the resolution we had in the package, so we'll have that signed. Soon as we let P E H P know, they're gonna send a letter to the Knights, and we'll just say, I've already talked to them, and told them, if, if the council chooses this, they can continue on P E H P, and we'll just move forward.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion regarding the land use transition requirement for Three Hundred North, West Side fifteen, and that's Dave.
Yeah, sorry. Give me one second to pull this up. In fact, Mayor, while I pull this up, I don't know if you want to go with a federal aid agreement.
Okay, we can do that, so, let's, uh...
That's the last one, Mayor.
All right, Travis.
Uh, Mayor Council, this one, um, we applied earlier for two projects through MAG that we got approved for, and this is one of them. UDOT has kind of decided where this is on their state road, that they would kind of take it over, but we're still, we're gonna be like a project manager on it, so we'll still be involved, but they require a federal aid agreement to be able to get started, and it, uh, basically, there's two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars that UDOT's appropriated to do this project, and then, the way the agreement states, anything over that amount, we would pay for that as a city, but I've talked to UDOT, and if the costs do get above that, you know, whether it's right after they do the engineering and they go out to bid, we'll have opportunities to either cut the project back if we don't think we can afford to do it all, or, you know, if through the process, change orders come up that weren't known about, we still have that option too, unless, you know, it's just something that absolutely has to be done, but we do have options to not be struck with a large bill, obviously, at the end, so, I felt pretty comfortable after talking with UDOT, that it wasn't just like a, here's our amount, and if you go three hundred thousand, you're just gonna find another, you know, forty-plus thousand to just pay for it, so, and it's just a requirement they have with the money that they're using, so we, we just have to have the mayor sign it after, and then, you know, move forward with it, so...
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion.
Exactly how we're gonna do this, is it just a motion or could the plans presented?
Just the side of the mayor's side of the federal aid agreement, but there was a resolution, was it?
And I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, okay, motion carries. Now, Dave, are you ready? Yeah.
What's, what's the latest word on the new stop, like, something that would be considered?
I think we've eaten a one on the highway on fourteen hundred.
Yeah, fourteen hundred south, and I am an S R one ninety-eight qualified, so they will get funding in this next budget here, so I'm guessing sometime this next summer, fall, that signal will go in.
We got a comment on, uh, on the email, did you respond to that then?
Brad, Brad did it.
You did? What do we have you for?
You gotta get the email, you're...
It's a good thing we got you, Brad.
The one on nine thirty is not qualified, but we are getting the one, and Brad did a reply of that comment, Kenya, to all three of those questions.
Okay, did they give any reasons why we didn't qualify?
Just didn't beat the warrants.
Not enough traffic.
We, we didn't quite beat the warrants on S R one ninety-eight, but it was close enough, and with the accident history, it pushed it over.
When was the study, when did they do the study on that?
Um, I don't know the exact date, they don't tell us when they do it, so we...
After, before, or after the temple?
It was after. It was after, after. I tried to get them to tell us so we can drive by with all our city vehicles, and I don't know what they're gonna do about it.
With more wrecks?
No.
Yes, no, we don't.
So, Mayor Council, this, this issue you've talked about, um, we've had this issue before the council a few times on whether to put a road on Three Hundred North, on the west side of I fifteen, between the business park and the residential area. The last time we met, the, the council decided that we would put a road in, that we didn't want the access cross-connected, so the city would put the road in, and it wouldn't allow the industrial businesses to use that road. And, and so, the question comes up, here's what the, the order that says, "To maintain the existing residential environment, commercial and industrial development adjacent to residential uses shall incorporate masonry walls, landscaping burns, building orientation and activity limitations, or other methods to create a separation between residential and non-residential uses. Each applicant must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the city that the methods integrated will effectively mitigate potential negative impacts." So, I asked Mr. Kahoon, uh, to give a written, submit to the council of what he would like to propose to demonstrate that, that there's separation there between the residential and the, uh, industrial. This is what Mr. Kahoon provided, uh, he is here, if you want to have him come up and ask questions, um, basically, he's saying, I don't know if you've gone through this, but, uh, uh, back when he received approval for his couple of buildings, and he's built one of them, he's got a couple of other, right?
Yeah.
Faces that you can put in, this was some of the, uh, requirements at that time that he had to do, um, and so it's proposed to follow the existing site plan approved by staff, um, the building to be located seventy-five feet from the property line, to give as much buffer as possible between line manufacturing and the R one A residential zone. He's saying that that is completed, the building was put down at least seventy-five feet, uh, building layout to be oriented so that no openings are located on the north side of the building, uh, for the future Three Hundred North and the R one A, that's been completed. Uh, office entrance to the building to be located as far to the center of the building as possible and away from the R one A zone, that's been done. Landscaping, add landscaping strip to approved site plan, four inches wide and sixty feet long along the north side of the building with evergreen shrubs, facilities, transition between light industrial and R one A. Add a small evergreen trees along the future chain link fence along the north property line that borders to R one A zone. It's also not done yet, that's in the, he's saying he will get that done. Says several light industrial projects have been built along the same light industrial R one A residential will transition, and buffers have been about forty feet with asphalt, ray gravel, chain link as the transition, this proposal goes well beyond what has been provided in the past, by expanding the buffer to seventy-five feet and adding landscaping areas, evergreens and trees. So, there's some pictures here, and I, I know things have changed in the meantime, when some of the businesses were built, and this one was built, uh, I think it's, uh, Lions Den and, what's the other name of that?
Well, Apex, they're, they're actually up against light industrial, Apexes.
Yeah, they already put, they're, they're built quite, real close to the property line, they put chain link fence up. The, the question really comes down to, the order that said masonry wall, and whether we require Mr. Kahoon to put a masonry wall along his, my personal feeling, I'm not making any conjunction with all the staff, is that why require that, I mean, we've already allowed chain link to go on the others, and we're not gonna pull those out and put it in at our expense, and I know the developers aren't gonna come back and tear it out for the, above the masonry, so, here's some pictures that Mr. Kahoon provided, just, uh, showing his building back quite away from where this road will go, um, showed some of the other industrial, uh, structures that have built along where this future road will go, and so the question is, if the council's comfortable with his proposal, he'll put a chain fence along there, uh, he'll put some evergreen trees, and is that sufficient buffer, or would the order say, no, you, you need... are you going to be ordered to say, no, you, you need to put a masonry wall, and make that a better buffer than, than what's currently there?
Do we have any comments?
I think we have to be consistent, we could, before I go, we either, we either, if we make him put up a masonry, we've got to go the others and tear them, just tear out their.
Or we need to do it. Well, and to be fair to staff, I'm, I'm, I really don't want to throw anybody under the bus, the requirements were different when Apex, and.
Right.
Because we, there was gonna be no road, but.
That's right.
Now that we've made a decision that we're gonna put the road in, I, I just think we have to do the best we can with what we have.
He has a, he has a question.
Well, I'm just saying, Lions Den is just putting up a building right now, I mean, just this last week, they were pouring concrete. So that's been there, that 300 North decision's been going back and forth as long, I've been there as long as they have building, which is sad, I'm still building, but it's my eternal project. So, so they've been building all along the same as I have, but they have no buffer, asphalt, straight to chain link. And then, and Apex is up against light industrial zone, but Lions Den is against the same R1A zone that I am, so it's the exact same area.
Okay, do we have any more? Do we have a motion?
And one other thing, if you read the code, it doesn't say that you have to have a masonry wall, it's saying it's one of the options. It, it doesn't, it, it says use berms, trees.
So how does this thing work?
Well, uh, he, his proposal is that we follow the staff report that was given a few years ago when he got approval to do his, um, his building, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm proposing that we allow him to proceed with the buffer zone, it's presented, chain link fence, and landscaping, and trees, but I don't know how you want that in that motion.
So I.
Can we say approve Mr. Kahoon's?
Yeah, I would, I would just make a motion to approve the proposal by Mr. Kahoon, uh, with his, his buffer proposal.
I'll make that proposal.
Okay, we got a motion. Do it, we have a second, do we have any other discussion? All right, this will be a roll call, Scott?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next thing is the ordinance amending the sewer and wastewater ordinance, so if they're not over to Dave.
Last item for you, Mayor Council, the, we, we've had a pre-treatment ordinance in the books since, what year, Sarah?
1997.
1997, but it has not been part of our wastewater ordinance in the book, so the, all of the red you see there is just putting the ordinance that's currently there into the format of our ordinance. There are some minor changes, but they were just stylistic. Uh, Sarah works with the state wastewater division of water quality, and so really, there's nothing, uh, major that was put in there, just some stylistic changes, and I put the numbers in to make it consistent, so we're just asking the council to approve this ordinance, putting the pre-treatment ordinance in our regular sewer ordinance.
The only other change?
Just one minute.
The only other change that was done in the ordinance is a couple of years ago, the EPA did a streamlining, just more rules and a bunch of other junk, I guess you could call it, but that was put in as recommended and required in some of these parts by the state, and they did send a letter approving, um, preapproving the ordinance and the chains and that.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
Just the same statement, it, it does need to be run through a spell checker.
Yeah, you, you can call me Kim now, because you need to put something after words.
We will do a spell check, it was, it was quite difficult, because I'm not a great expert on words, but every time you try to do something, move something else, so.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's a table, yeah.
Once, once we make all the changes, we'll, we'll do a second check, or a third check, whatever.
Okay, so we have a motion to.
Um, oh, okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, we'll move the ordinance amending the sewer and wastewater ordinance, um, you need to sign it there, it's a resolution, I'll just.
An ordinance. One second. Now, do you want that, uh, on the deal that they fill through and?
Oh, sure, yes, yes, yes.
And grammar?
Yeah, yeah, after spell checking, I will.
All right, I'm forced to say about that. Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second, and, uh, all those, oh, this is a roll call too, isn't it? Or is it not, Mark?
Yeah, for an ordinance.
Yes, it is.
Okay, roll call, Larry?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?